Okay, thank you all for being here tonight. It's six o'clock and we'll cause meeting to order. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Vouch. Height?
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Thank you. I will invite you to stand for the prayer and pledge to be led by Alderman Height.
Alderman Witcher is going to do the pledge.
Okay.
Heavenly Father, bow with me and ask all prayers. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us together tonight in this hall and to conduct the business of the city. I hope you'll guide us and everything that we do and say and think will be in the benefit of the residents of North Little Rock. We also will reach out to you to look out for our armed forces that are protecting us either here or there. And Jesus, and Heavenly Father, we just want to remind everybody that Jesus is the reason that we celebrate this season and forgive us all of our many sins. In Jesus Christ's name I do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So move.
Second.
On the motion.
For approval of the prior minutes, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height? And?
Yes.
Okay, communications, anybody want to pull any? I'm showing two. Anybody want? About a motion to adopt?
Who accepts and files?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes. Thank you very much. I am showing that we have a special presentation tonight, Arkansas Community Development Society presentation of Friend of Community Development Award. Are they here to do that? Yes, please. Come up and tell us all about what you've got going on tonight.
I'm a little bit tall, so.
Yeah.
So I'm Whitney Horton and I'm a board member with Arkansas Community Development Society. And we are a nonprofit organization that advances and empowers professionals and change leaders by facilitating the exchange of ideas and best practices and resources in community development across the state. And each year at our annual conference, we recognize individuals in different organizations from around the state who have been nominated by their peers in different categories. And this year, the North Little Rock Police Department was nominated and awarded the Friend of ACDS Award for 2016. So I know y'all are very familiar with our wonderful NLRPD, but wanted to read a short snippet of part of the nomination. It says, you know, the NLRPD does all of the normal things that we expect of our police. They write tickets, they do arrest bad people and they serve and protect, but they do so much more. The department has gained national attention for its efforts in arresting online sexual predators when this was just emerging as a public threat. They do cookouts to raise funds to cover costs of medical expenses for community members. They have spearheaded a drive to collect items for the Baton Rouge flood relief, or we can just find them changing a flat tire for citizens across the city. And so while Officer Tommy Norman was the initial inspiration behind this award, we want to give it on behalf to Chief Mike Davis and the entire corps of our police officers and supporting staff of the NLRPD because without that leadership and all of the support there, you know, community policing would not be known on this worldwide level that we love seeing out of North Little Rock. So just wanted to present this to Chief Davis tonight.
It's here. Thank you so much. We are very, very proud of our police department and every member from the chief all the way down to the newest recruits. So thank you very much for that recognition. Well deserved and I'm proud of them. Okay, let's see here. I think we're going to do business, Ms. Taylor.
R-16192, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Valerie McLean to the position previously held temporarily by Alderman Murray Witcher on the North Little Rock Library Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Ross?
Motion.
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Valerie is here. Valerie, stand up. Let us all say thank you very much for all your service that you're getting ready to give us.
Before we go into the next one, let me just make a really quick comment that, you know, while we were still searching for our new director, we brought in some of our own people to help put a good foundation up there at the library. And Crystal and Vicki Matthews have been able to build that back and get us back in good financial shape. And it's now time to start weaning our people off that board and bringing it back to control by the citizens that so support it. So Valerie, thank you. And our next appointee is Kim. And they're ready to take over. And Murray and Steve are going off. Maybe my intention in the next two or three months to roll off Bernadette and Charlie Baxter. So if y'all have got any suggestions, these were both suggested by our council members, I'd love to have them. So with that, 16193.
Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Kimberly Danielle Drake to the position previously held temporarily by Alderman Steve Baxter on the North Little Rock Library Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Kim, please stand. Thank you very much again for agreeing to serve.
Mayor, you mentioned that Steve and I had been there through our prudent financial management this year, we're going to make-
I agree.
-our last bond payment on the main building, which is a little over $300,000 this month, and that bond will be paid off. And all we'll have left will be the Main Street bonds.
Yeah, I think it's wonderful. Karen has been watching and she says we're in good shape and she says it, I believe it. So thank you both for your additional service to your city. I do appreciate it. Next, I want to pull some legislation out of order in order to meet the requirements of this improvement district. So without objection, I want to reach over and grab 01686 and call it now if that's okay.
Mr. Taylor, are you ready, Mr. Taylor?
Ready.
Let's do that right now.
An ordinance affirming ordinance number 8854 to establish and lay off the North Little Rock Multi-Purpose Improvement District Number 37 Faulkner Crossing, first reading.
About to suspend the readings. Move.
Maybe suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
I saw Ann Spinelli the other day.
Yeah, this one.
Did you see him?
Yeah.
That was great to see him and live in back in-
Last Thursday night.
Yeah. Okay, now we can go to R-16194, Ms. Taylor. No hurry, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we're going back to-
R-16194, want me to read it?
There you go.
Got you. A resolution appointing assessors for North Little Rock Multi-Purpose Improvement District Number 37 Faulkner Crossing and for other purposes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Are we official now, Mr. Harden?
Thank you very much.
Read it for you.
I got it. R-16195, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution adopting a budget for the 2017 fiscal year for the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second. Question.
Just one question under the arts and cultural. We had 68,000, we've had that 20,000 that we had encumbered for Park Hill, and so that's not showing up in this budget.
Well, what I think is going to happen is it's still in the system. And we'll come back in the next meeting and you will have a resolution that will have a list of all carryover monies. And that will be one of them. It'll list it. It'll say $20,000 Park Hill Art Improvement, right? Yeah.
Okay, so it will-
Yeah.
Okay.
It's carryforward money, basically.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's still there.
Mayor, it's actually probably going to be the first meeting in January, so we make sure we get all purchase orders that are outstanding at December 31st that need to carry over.
Okay.
So anything that's encumbered will be carried over.
Yeah, I mean, it might be a full page or two-page list that we'll have to prove. We've been doing business like that for years. Our new auditors don't like us to do it that way, so we agreed to do whatever made them happy, so.
As long as it's still there.
If the auditors are happy, we're happy. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. On the motion for the 2017 budget.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-16196, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution adopting a budget for the 2017 fiscal year for the North Little Rock Electric Department.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Will the same thing be, will it be the same way if there's anything that the carryover will have, will get our list the first meeting in January?
Yes.
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-16197, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
01687, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending section 1.1.4 and City Park MAP attachments of North Little Rock Municipal Code, Chapter 10 Parks and Recreation to include the addition of Arkansas Inland Maritime Museum, first reading.
About a motion to suspend. So moved. Second.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings.
Oh, is that, wait a minute. I would, let me redraw my motion and reword it. Motion to suspend all readings.
Okay, and a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Question?
Okay. This, but is this being designated as a park?
No.
Okay, that's where the wording in here, I was a little confused on it.
All we're doing, we're doing this just exactly like we did Stone Links, that we're transferring the management and oversight of this property and the promotion of this property to Parks and Rec. The land itself stays in the city's name. It's not part of Park's land so that we don't have the issues if we get any outdoor grants that that property will not be included as a park so that we can develop further for other opportunities later, if we so choose. Right, council?
That's correct. So there's a, the section two that we placed, just like you said, Mayor, is the same one that we used in, you know, when we were approving Stone Links and including that within Parks and Recreation jurisdiction. So they'll have management and control of the facilities, but, you know, to determine something as a, as a park under state law, that's a term of art that special rules apply to. So those dedication, that dedication does not apply in this circumstance, nor did it in Stone Links, because we don't want those kind of special rules to attach. This is a separate kind of use for these properties, so it's treated differently. And as, as the mayor stated too, there's also concerns about anytime you use outdoor recreational grant money, we've put cautionary language in there about that because that restricts the use of the property and probably in the long-term development of this parcel as well as Stone Links. We would, it seems that we would want greater flexibility to use those properties.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a question for Jason. So do we have any other properties in the city that have this kind of distinction?
We haven't labeled them as such. I mean, so the ones that we adopted as part of our Parks and Recreation ordinance initially, they were all generally identified as parks. They've been used that way. So at least state law restrictions would seem to apply. Of course, where we've accepted outdoor recreational grant funds, then an outdoor easement applies to those properties such that indoor uses are prohibited.
Thank you.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01688, Alderman Witcher?
Call it, please.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 14 Remount Road in the city of North Little Rock from R1 to C3 classification by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption.
I have a question.
Second. Question?
Mr., Sean. The legislation that I, the legislation that I had two weeks ago was about this same piece of property, but this was not included in that. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, what's going on here?
There, two weeks ago, you approved, you waived the street, half-street improvements at the front of the property. They are wanting to rezone to commercial to put an office there. So I haven't heard if they're going to reuse the house there or tear that down and build a new building, but the agent for the applicant is here if you wanted to ask that question.
You know the answer to that, Mike Marler?
He wants to use his house for an architect's office, but he wants to upgrade it so that his idea is set in more than five.
And so that's the reason we need to rezone it from R1 to C3.
And it will be architectural firm?
Yes.
Really? Okay. Okay, thank you. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
01689, Alderman Baxter?
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning certain unused easements on property located on Maumell Boulevard in the West North Little Rock Commercial Edition in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Public comment to Bobby Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Here, I've got some issues here that I've talked about before, but I don't know whether they've just died or just got sidetracked or what. But it's the leaves problem that I have on Protho. The storm drains are, one of them is covered up. At the end of Boyer and Protho, the storm drain is over half-covered up with leaves. Well, they piled them over the fence on the street. The taxpayers in Rose City paid dearly for these drains. And if this keeps up, it ain't going to be long till we ain't going to have no drains.
Corner of Protho and what?
It's at Protho, at the end of Boyer, is where the storm drain is. And from there halfway back to Atkins, there's leaves piled in the yard, a big row of them, and they're piled out in the street. And the leaf people, when they vacuum them up, they get the ones in the yard, but the ones that's in the street that people runs over, they turn into mud and that is never cleaned up. Is this someone that y'all have that can recommend to them to bag them or get them up out of the street, back up in the yard?
Bobby, we have that problem literally all over the city, so it's not, it's not exclusive to Boyer and Protho. These property owners, even the people that do it for hire, I saw one the other day, was just blowing it out in the middle of the street. And when we, when we can catch them, we will, and we send, we'll send code or street department out there. So if you see that happening, while it's happening is when we have to catch them. So pick up the phone, call, and when we're out there and catch them real quick, we'll explain to them how the program works.
All right, well, I watched this happen. And this is about in the middle of my time here tonight. This Billy, the guy that lives right next door to me, 4605 Boyer, which I call it Rat Cockroach Hilton. He's hauling in mattresses, box springs. And I got a little Boston Terrier Bulldog here a while back. She was getting anywhere from one to three rats a day when she gets in my garage or my woodshed, and she'll bring them and lay them right there between my truck and my back door. And then I do away with them.
What's he bringing the furniture in for?
It's just junk. It's stuff he picks up everywhere. And I'll just go ahead and close off on that. I don't, I don't want to say anything about the judge other than what we're getting from this address is not justice the way I was raised up. It's another 30, 60, or 90 days every time he goes to court. And that's not hearsay. I've been there with the code enforcement and watched him show pictures, new pictures and stuff like that, and he said another 30 or 60 or 90 days is what he gives him. I don't know, I don't know what the judge's problem is, but that's not justice to me. I don't care who, but that is not justice. I've not give up on him yet. I've give out, but I ain't give up on him yet. I'm still hoping it may be one of these days that one of them pictures will catch him just right and he'll be some kind of justice done it. Now then, the street sweeper, he's been out there, but I don't prove the way he does things. He may be on a trial run, I don't know, but he's about a foot and a half out in Protho between Boyer and Atkins. Now then, the street sweeper, he's been out there, but I don't prove it the way he does things. He may be on a trial run, I don't know, but he's about a foot and a half out in Protho between Boyer and Atkins. He didn't sweep the curb, the gutter. He was out in the street. He done the same thing on Boyer, and he went around rocks where Billy drags them out of this guy next door to me, where he drags this... He gravelled his driveway and part of his yard, and he's got a tandem Michael trailer, and he's only got two wheels on it. When he pulled that trailer out of the yard, the back two wheels are not on it, and they dragged gravel out in the street. He swept around that, and I talked to Danny, and he sent the code enforcement out there and made him clean it up. But he went up there where this house was burnt, 4523. He went up there and cut some long limbs, they're 10, 12, 14 foot long, drug them across the road to 4617 or 4517 and left them. They've been there three weeks. And Harold won't pick them up, and I don't blame him because they're longer than the bed of that truck is, the way he has to load them. And there, at the end of Campbell Road, 161 on Engle Highway, they've started a dumping ground there. Right at the end of Campbell Road, across the street on Engle Highway, they've started a dumping. This stuff's been there over two months, and it hadn't been picked up. And I talked to Harold about it, and he said, "Well, he's supposed to cut this stuff up in a certain length where we can handle it." And I know I have had that brochure, and that's what it says, certain length and diameter and a certain length around this.
A 12?
To be picked up. And then the recycled bins, I still see them from time to time. Some of them are using them, but there's some out today that will be there at the end of this week. They don't... I don't know whether they use them. They just shove them out again in the street and leave them. There's one right across from these leaves there on Boyer, on Protho, right there at the end of Boyer. It's been there three weeks out. Ain't nobody live there.
I'm taking notes, Bobby. I'm taking notes.
I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you, Bobby.
And I'll...
This'll give me and Danny something to do tomorrow.
I'll be back in two weeks and check with you, see how this is going. If I can help you, you let me know.
I know that, and I appreciate it.
When this grass cutting starts and they start blowing it out in the street, you're gonna hear from me.
Good deal. I'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, sir.
City council members, got anything to order tonight?
Well, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Well...
Thank you.
Jolly old Saint Nick. Thank you. I got a few things, if nobody else has anything left.
Just a reminder, next meeting the 27th.
That was one of them.
Tuesday. Sorry, didn't mean to steal your thunder, Mayor.
No, I can mark that off. Next meeting is Tuesday, December the 27th, okay? Remember also that swearing-in ceremony, it will be held on Sunday, January the 1st at 1:00 p.m. And it's certainly open to the...
Yay.
What did I say?
I said yay.
Yay. Sunday, 1 o'clock, City Council, City Hall, everybody's invited. The other thing I want to tell you about, you know, we've been working on the sell and closing of the Smart House Way property. A lot of issues we had to deal with, including clear title and easements, and that was one that had the brown fill on it and so on and so forth. I've met with all the parties, and everything's going great. I really anticipated that we were gonna close in the next 10 days. We have been informed by the attorneys that are putting everything together that it's probably gonna push us over until the first year, sometime in January. Everything's in place but just a few things. Our contract called for the closing to be by December the 19th. I wasn't aware of it until today, so I'm gonna... We'll let that contract lapse, but I told them that I felt very confident that y'all's intention was to close, and so that I'll bring back in some legislation at the last meeting of this month that basically says we're gonna give them another 30 days or three weeks or whatever. We should know by then exactly the date that we'll close. I did get confirmation today that we will close on the Manise House on December 15th, so that's going according to plan. So I wanted you to be aware of that, and I'll bring that legislation back in on the The... Just heads up, you know, we've approved the budget tonight. We'll come back in with legislation at the next meeting that will approve the raises that are in the budget. It's just normal, what we always do. So that's coming. Anything else that I'm forgetting, counselor? Ms. Taylor, you did an absolutely wonderful job tonight.
Thank you very much.
Let's everybody be sure to send Diane an email and tell Diane that she might very well have lost her job as being a... Bring our court clerk, but I'm teasing. Thank you, Becky, for subbing while Diane represents us as international...
Yeah, municipal clerks.
Yeah, she's a big dog in that, so we're proud of her. Okay, with that, how about a motion?
So moved.
On the motion to adjourn.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Witcher, I guess.